We had requests in for $1,061,000 in additional spending this year. And we had, in the neighborhood, depending on how you do the math, of $675,000 to $700,000 in possible additional revenue. And so for the second year in a row, and I sent a note to Scott, by the way, saying, "You chose the right time to go," you rat. My predecessor was Chair of the Finance Committee. That meant we had to make substantial cuts across the board. We had to cut about, let me see here, do I have the number with me?
$111,000.
Well, it was $111,000, and that was after we cut 200 and mumble from the schools. So it was not inconsiderable. And so that's where we are.
We reduced stabilization?
No, well, we reduced the amount of money they were planning on putting into stabilization.
You were planning on putting 250.
That was our original hope. That hope quickly faded. We're planning on, probably, we'll get about $100,000 going into stabilization because my concern is, we haven't put substantial monies into stabilization in quite a while. And we've had a very long economic expansion, and I'm not expecting that to continue for the rest of my natural life, or even for the rest of my mortgage. So I anticipate that we're going to need to draw on stabilization within a few years. And I would like that to be there for us when we need it. So anyway, that having been said.
How do you anticipate revenues other than real estate? In other words, it would be helpful to me, and I apologize for not understanding.
No, that's fine.
I know that the, for example, the building inspector is on salary, correct?
The building inspector is salaried, yes.
And do you anticipate, and where does the money go from permits?
The money from permits ends up in free cash. But some of the monies from permits is also used to offset the money, what we pay to the electrical inspector and the plumbing and gas inspectors. So this year, that's $100,000 in each case for them. Total new revenues, dum de dum de dum dum dum, let me see, that we had this year, yeah, we're just shy of $700,000 against over a million. Hello there. Ah ha! I dubbed the quorum.
Oh goodness.
It's okay. We're aware of traffic.
And could you tell me what you currently have or anticipate to have at year-end in free cash?
Well...
And how much you're applying to the budget?
Well, bear in mind that it is, free cash doesn't get applied against the budget. Free cash is available for warrant articles, but it's actually exceptionally difficult and not common practice, at least in the town of Berlin, to apply free cash against the budget itself, right? Free cash is something that comes in generally through one-time revenue as opposed to recurring revenue. Because if you apply, if we apply one-time revenue to something that's an annual expense, we're going to get into trouble, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Could you tell me how much you currently have in free cash?
Um, yes, I can do that. My recollection is we had about $709,000 beginning of this process in free cash, but let me find the piece of paper that has the actual number on it. Yeah, we had $709,000, and after all the warrant articles, we expended $509,000 of that. But we keep a $200,000 buffer in free cash at the request of the treasurer so that we don't have to engage in short-term borrowing to cover cash flow matters. Does that make sense?
It does, so that there's $100,000 available.
200K, actually.
Right, but you want to keep $100,000, right?
Well, 200K is what the treasurer asks us to keep in free cash in order for him to be able to make sure that town expenses don't overflow to the degree that we...
But you're spending $590,000.
$509.
$9,000 on...
Yeah, $709.
The budget.
Uh, no, so $509 of that is being spent on warrant articles.
On what, please?
Warrant articles for the annual town meeting.
I consider that a budget.
In our universe, the warrant articles are indeed town spending, but they're not part of the annual budget in terms of the way that we calculate cyclical spending and cyclical income. But it is certainly town spending and not unreasonable to think of it in the way that you're talking about.
I'm here to learn, and I'm learning.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Well, now that we have a quorum, I'm going to actually skip back and give you a minute or two to cogitate and put the spotlight back on Chris, since we now have a... So it's your turn again, Chris.
All right, so I'm here to advocate for several employees who have had their salaries cut.
Well, increases in their salaries cut.
Right.
Yes.
Well, in some cases, it's because they are needed for more hours. You want to consider that?
I understand.
Okay. We've got many employees who are overworked.
Yes, we do.
And I think it would be a good idea, as we're bringing on the town administrator, to think about him or her getting support from the staff and being able to do the work, have the time to do the work. And with not being able to give them the hours that they need, I don't think that's going to happen. I don't know if you want to run, I basically ran through the employees that had salaries that were needed, were a needed increase. And some of them were even for us being able to choose, for instance, the town administrator, a new tax collector slash treasurer. You know, you wanted us to make an appointment if you thought that we couldn't live with
Correct.
this, the way that the cuts fell. And so that's why I'm here.
You're in good company.
Yes, I know.
Go ahead.
So the first is the town accountant, who has put in many more hours than she is allotted.
Yes.
The second was the building inspector's clerk slash ZBA clerk, who puts in more hours also than she is paid for, which, by the way, is not something that you want to make a practice of.
I understand.
It's illegal, and it shouldn't be happening for the hourly employees. Let's be clear about that.
Right.
I'm not saying that you need to change it.
No, I understand.
I'm saying we need to send people home when their hours are up.
Well, I was saying it nicely, so, but...
No, no, frankness is welcome. I'll try not to swear, though I'll probably fail. But that's okay.
The third is the administrative secretary, who will be needing to support a new town administrator and does not have any support staff. We suggested a minutes clerk, which would help alleviate that in some way, the hours that she's putting in over and above what she's been told she should be working. The treasurer, I think the salary was, for a new hire, personnel approved the salary line, and I believe that was cut.
By half.
Right, well, was it $11,000?
It's half of the proposed increase, yes.
Yes. And that was also suggested by personnel.
I understand.
Okay. The town administrator, I did email Steve at MRI, and he sent me an email back to give you, and of course, I felt he's on the floor, so...
It's okay, I have lots of paper, too.
I can't find it.
Well, if you want to give me your best recollection, that's okay.
It was basically that he was hoping that you would leave it at the amount that was put in the budget, and that leave it to the selectmen to be able to negotiate the amount of salary for the town administrator who we choose.
Ah, okay, I see.
That would be the ideal situation, is pretty much what the email said.
So this is the 150 versus the 145?
Right.
Okay.
I know, and you know, that the legal expenses will, that's not a salary, but the legal expenses probably won't be sufficient, just letting you know again.
No, I know.
The council on aging salary, I wasn't clear on what that cut was.
Sure. Would you like me to tell you?
Sure.
Okay. We left the salary of the director alone. She proposed increasing the number of hours and the pay for drivers for their van. She also wanted to create a new position for a coordinator, I assume, for drivers for the van and various other people and whatever.
Right. So I believe they're losing Peggy Sardell, who was organizing that.
Yeah.
At no cost.
I understand.
To the budget.
The...
Right.
We will bear that in mind. I mean, it's, we're in a, you know, I know you know this because you've been on the Finance Committee. We take no joy, unless we feel that someone's being really overly hopeful or irresponsible, which isn't very common, that's actually pretty rare, then we don't like, it's not our goal to cut money, but we just, we're up against it.
Okay.
But we will bear in mind what you're saying, thinking about what we can restore and what we can't.
There's also the money that you cut from personnel, which was $5,000 to, in case we had an HR issue, which we needed to get some help for or help with. That would help to alleviate June's job, because she ends up doing those things. And so we haven't used it, I don't believe, in the last year or so. But we most likely should, because she is overwhelmed by the HR issues that come up. And it either falls in her lap, and she shares with us.
Or Dennis's.
Or Dennis's.
Right.
I just, I think the amounts, I tried to add up the amounts of the things I was just talking about. It was, it's about $77,000.
Right.
I know that's a lot of money to try to find from elsewhere. We're going to lose good people. They're not going to be able to get their jobs done without the extra hours. And I would just urge the Finance Committee to take another look. And even if you're able to, look at the capital plan and see whether there's something that could wait another year.
Well, bear in mind, it's exceptionally...
It's the whole picture.
It's exceptionally difficult to move money, it's not impossible, but it's very difficult to move money from capital to budget. But, yeah, we'll bear that in mind.
I hope so. And I know there's others that probably want to speak on the same subject, the salaries of these individuals.
Okay.
The one thing Buzz and everyone else there is that I urge you is that every time we bring a new person in, you always hear, "We need to pay competitively. Why would they come to Berlin? We need to pay competitively." If you have that frame of thought for new employees, you have to take care of employees who have been here for 30 years, that they could go somewhere else because of their experience. And what we're asking for is only fair, to help them do their job, to help all of us do their job. As Berlin grows, their positions grow, their time grows, and if you've cut them off at 37 hours, where's going to be the backlog? Where's going to be the delay? What's going to be the impact? So I'm trying not to, you know, just think here, that, oh my God, we have a shortfall, but impact long-term as Berlin grows next year with hotels and homes and every other business that's going to come in. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure. Do you want the gentle folk from the building inspector's office to...
Sure, he insisted on coming. I give him a lot of credit for coming in.
Sir, you have the floor. What's your name again?
Again, Richard Hanks, I'm the alternate building commissioner, filling in as to Joe while he's absent.
Yes, hi, Richard, I'm Buzz, I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee. Go for it.
So obviously, I have no skin in the game, because I'm not going to be here probably another three weeks, four weeks. But what I've observed is that building department is very busy, and the building department takes in a lot of revenue.
The what, sorry?
Building.
Yep.
Building Department.
Yep.
The clerk serves a dual role. She, in her job description, she's dedicated to the zoning board as well as the building department. So your proposed cut of 2,200 all is...
That, I'm sorry, I'm confused about that. Oh, you mean for her, in the context of the ZBA?
Yes.
I see, okay, go ahead.
Right, so you, you're proposing cutting the ZBA's clerical, which is...
Correct.
My admin.
Yes. Now I understand.
So by her job description, she's obligated to both departments. So she's still going to have to go to the ZBA, the zoning board, and do their minutes, do their research and everything else, but that's going to come and cut into the hours that's dedicated to the building department. Just in permit fees alone, the apartment complex, they brought in 400 grand. The apartment complex dedicated an extra $31,000 this year to help the building department hire an additional employee.
Right.
Because the workload is so great. They're dedicating another $31,000 this next fiscal year because the workload is so great in that department. So please, don't, don't cut the department.
Bear in mind, though, that that money is to be applied against...
To everybody.
Incorrect, incorrect. It's specifically, if you read the letter, to be applied against people doing...
The $31,000 is just to go towards another additional inspector.
That's correct.
But what I'm getting at is if the workload is there to justify another inspector, why wouldn't the workload be there to justify the support staff?
Well, then the person who negotiated the terms of that letter with them should have thought of that, and they did not.
Okay, again, no skin in the game?
Yeah.
I'm just here as an observation.
No, and what you're saying is not unreasonable, but I'm just pointing out to you what the funds are available for, which we did not negotiate.
Okay, well, I'm not specifically asking you to designate that money towards it, I'm just trying to express that along with all the workload, if you start cutting back on the staffing, the support staff, you're going to hinder the department. And just for correction, you said that part of the fees, I think you said that part of the salaries go towards paying the wiring inspector and the plumbing inspector, they're fee-based.
No, that's not part of the salaries, they're offset by income expected from those fees.
Right.
So I think you may have...
But it's not a drain on the budget.
I'm aware of that.
It's a plus to the budget.
Well, sir, that money, that money shows up in free cash, it doesn't show up in the budget.
But it's revenue coming into the town.
That is correct, but it doesn't show up as money that's available for budgetary expenses.
It will be next year for free cash.
And as I've said before, and will repeat now, free cash is not generally available for the budget. It's not impossible to do that, but that's an exceptional step for us to take. So I apologize, I'm not meaning to get combative with you, but I'm not sure that you, you'd have no reason to understand the strictures under which we operate, I'm just trying to explain them.
Well, I'm familiar with town governments.
Okay.
Not you.
Okay.
But the point I'm getting at, Chris, is again, it's a very busy department, and that $2,200, I think, would be a travesty to cut. It's a vital link to have that person do the work for the ZBA, because she reports back to the building commissioner?
Yes, I know.
What is going on between that department and ours?
Believe me, we know. I have lost more than one night's sleep this year dealing with the budget, so I'm not unaware of the impacts that we're having on people's lives, believe me. We don't take it lightly. But I appreciate your thoughts about it, though.
So the free cash could go towards warrant articles next year, so that's a possibility, but not to the budget.
Yeah.
And there...
That's not impossible, but it's an exceptional circumstance, and it's not something that we would do for that kind of expense under normal circumstances. But thank you. Okay, anybody else from, yes, sir? And tell me who you are, because you look familiar, but I can't...
Dan Spiegel.
Ah ha! Okay.
I've been in this town longer than probably most anybody in this room.
Probably, yes.
And Ms. June has been working for the town for a long time, and seems like the people that stay the longest don't get paid what they should be getting paid. And she is one of them. We've had this discussion over my tenure in the town, and it's going to be a shame if she goes, because she keeps this town running. It isn't you guys, it isn't the selectmen, it's that lady right there with the numbers that come out correct all the time. And we're asking for the ZBA for $2,200 for Leanne.
Yes.
So forth. Just ride in Route 62 today. There's two businesses starting up operations that are going to have to come before the ZBA because they're in violation. And there's nobody going to be there to be able to do the writing. I mean, come on, guys, you've got to start at the bottom and work out.
Well, sir, I have a request. Please, please presume that we're acting in good faith.
Yeah?
Okay? I mean, you may not like the results of our good-faith deliberations based on the numbers that were presented with, and I'm totally down with you advocating for people, but please presume we're acting in good faith, if you'd be so kind.
Right, but when you give out some of these exorbitant salaries...
Excuse me?
Police chief, fire chief, the building inspector, that's a ton of money.
Anybody else?
I want to go first.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I do appreciate the fact that you have a tough job, and you don't get paid at all for the job that you do.
Right, yeah.
So I do appreciate, but in the case of many of the people that Chris mentioned, but from a selfish perspective, for the clerk in the building inspector's office, she works weekends and she works nights without pay doing some of the stuff. We were very concerned about next year with the gearing up of down at the Rotary. There's going to be a lot of work, a lot of inspection. She keeps that office running, and I was very pleased to see a building commissioner come in and support, had no idea he was coming here. To lose her would be a travesty. We asked for this money, and we thought we had it, because when I asked if you wanted to hear from us, you said, "No, you're all set." And I was a little taken aback. And again, I know you have to make what might seem insurmountable decisions, but if this town is to run the way it needs to run, there are key people in the town, and I would advocate for the town clerk's office, too, but that would only add to your worries.
She's already done that herself, but that's fine, I agree with you.
We wanted the $2,200, and we listed this part-time, not full-time.
Yes.
Because we wanted to give her the opportunity to do extra work at certain times when she needed to. If during the summer she needed some, you know, extra hours to keep up with what's going on down at the Rotary, whatever. I would hope that somehow, that there's some level place where we could find doing something for some of these people. As Chris said, she's added it up, it comes to $77,000. It seems like a lot, I grant you that. But in the scope of things, each of these individuals that we're talking about are key people.
Absolutely.
And even for our interim building commissioner to mention the fact that she's key, I think, tells you the story. She was to be for both of us, and it was to be within those hours. I don't know how she does what she does, other than the fact that she does it on weekends and nights. We need to be fair to our people. And I don't think we're being fair if we don't find some way to compensate folks for the work that they're doing.
Thank you. Peg, if you could be brief, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, Buzz, and one of the emails that you sent, and, sorry, I tried to find it.
That's okay.
You said that you were trying to keep expenses flat. Yes, no? Did I make that up in my head?
No, I'm not trying to keep expenses flat, I'm trying to keep expenses versus income flat and balanced.
So when there's a high level of expenses for departments across the board, is that an area? I mean, when I look at budgets, when I do my budget at work, I look at musts and wants, or wants and needs.
Right.
Want a lot, need a lot less. So how does that weigh in when you're looking at all the expenses across a department? Is it a want, or is it a need?
I don't know how to answer that question. Can you frame it slightly differently, if you would, please?
Okay. Let's pick on Mr. Roseberry, only because he's here and I saw him earlier, so I can pick on him. There's a request for an expense for multiple uniforms. Is it a want, or is it a need? Does he need it? Does he need a brand-new, Mr. Roseberry, do you need a brand-new uniform every day to do your job?
No.
That's the kind of what I'm...
I try to wear my shirt when I go there. But I don't need a uniform. Basically, what we need is a green vest, we need a hard hat and safety glasses.
So that's what I'm getting to, Buzz, a want and a need, you know? We all want to look professional in the town and represent the town when we go out to new business. Absolutely, we'll never disagree with you on that. But is that, is that critical, to do your job, that you have on a white shirt versus you have on a badge and maybe a hat that says...
Okay, Peg, I need to, just FYI, we have to look at every single depart, hold on.
No, you asked for an example, and that's not what I'm getting at.
We have to look at every single department, and we don't necessarily, as a group of unpaid volunteers, for whom, to whom the responsibility of saying yes and no against what income the town reasonably can expect to have coming in, against the expenses the town wishes, have time to delve into every budget down to the particular line item.
Okay.
We just look at the departments and say, one of the first things we say is, what's the likely workload that we can foresee for that department as best we know? And so while I agree with you about the uniforms, I can't say that I necessarily looked at that particular line item or that we did, and fished it out.
No, no, but you can ask for an example of clarification, it was only because I ran into him that he was an easy one to pick on, to give an example.
Sure, sure.
So that's why I was saying want versus need, and I know that you guys, Ann Lady, can't possibly go line by line, dollar by dollar.
Right.
So that's all I was asking for, is that when you're looking to cut, that it's that balance of a want and a need.
Just to follow up on that, we could have done a across-the-board percentage of everything, but we elected not to do that. That wouldn't be fair, that we're not serving the town doing that. So we were selective, as best we could.
Yeah, and I think whenever we're looking at that, you know, our collective judgment about what that means isn't necessarily going to match the collective judgment of another set of people about what that means. So we honestly, you know, acting in good faith and not having, not having any value of one department over another inherently, but just looking to see where we can and can't cut. Because some departments we can't cut.
Agreed.
Right? Oh, would I love to go after Worcester County Retirement, who quintupled the amount that we pay them. Quintupled. And our initial payment was $100,000 plus because of mismanagement of retirement funds. And we're now paying the cost for that. And that's the reason why the school committee, for instance, is sitting here. If we hadn't had that, they'd have been fully funded, June and Dennis would have been fully funded, we would have had the money to pay for this and several other things. We'd still have had to make cuts, but they wouldn't have been as broad as they have been. And we have to pay that under statute, we have no option.
Understood.
So those are some things that we get hit with, that we detest, that we can't change. Though I, one thing I'm looking at is talking with the finance committees and governments of other towns around here, which I'll talk with you folks about as well, before doing it, to see if we can get a broad voice to speak to the legislature about the mismanagement of retirement funds for state employees, which I think verges on the criminal. I have to, I got to tell you.
Okay.
But, yeah, okay. Thank you, I took notes on what you said.
I have notes, I've been taking notes, too.
Okay, I apologize if I gave you, you know, silent gurs in response, I think you're, I think you're, what you're saying is totally appropriate. And if we can, if we can give relief... And if we can, if we can give relief where you're asking, then we will. We'll have to see. I can't promise anything. To, you know, to address your particular point about, "I told you you didn't need to come," I apologize. It was worse than I thought it was gonna be. So, that was my mistake.
I would concur too, that after spending the last couple hours of the budget, the numbers are really, really tough for this year because there are places where there are mandatory expenses that have to be addressed and there's only so far the money we have to go.
Yeah, I asked Tim Wysocki to look at the spreadsheet just to make sure there's not something somewhere hiding in the formulas that might save us all.
And we really hope to find a problem with the formula and the formula was correct, just the numbers.
I'm gonna be sitting down with, with Dennis and June tomorrow in part to see if there's any relief that we can get on the income side from things that I may have missed. You know, we're trying to pull rabbits out of the hat if they exist. And if we can, we will.
Just one other comment. Two and a half percent, we're not into a two-and-a-half override this year. That's what we're planning on. I mean, that's another option, but we've, we've kind of said, "No, that's not where we wanna go." We're trying to keep that tax rate at a reasonable level.
Well, I want to be frank. If we're gonna, if we were as a town to go for an override, a month before a town meeting is called political death. That's called mal, political malpractice. We can't do that. People would say no, for good reason. We wouldn't have time to communicate with them the reasons for it. So, yeah, Chris.
Are you at the two-and-a-half percent of this?
We are, yes.
Absolutely.
That's what, two-and-a-half.
Yeah. We've, and in fact, we've, we've upped, we have, we have bored a little bit into some of the safety margins on issues where we can bore into the safety margin. And we'll, you know, we'll, if we, if we can do more of that and be comfortable with it, we will. But that's, we've already done that to a degree, even to arrive at the level of cuts that we've provided. So, we've really...
I appreciate, you know, all that you all do. I just urge you to take another look because
Sure.
if it's gonna affect so many people, you know, I think we have a problem. We need to help try to fix. And I would imagine maybe the schools have some more things to talk about.
Yeah, yeah. I told them it'd be good if they showed up.
And, you know, and I did mention last time I was here that I would imagine the schools are gonna, I would advocate for them also.
Well, you know, Bob, Bob and Jeff and June and Dennis and I, in different configurations, have been on the phone since Friday talking about the cuts, the cuts to the schools, which I'm gonna brief my colleagues on shortly when we get to that point. Okay, well, thank you. And like I said, I did take notes and I was thinking, and if I gave you grumpy faces, I'm sorry, that's in the nature of the beast. That doesn't mean I'm not gonna consider what you said as, as best we can. And if we, if we can give you relief, then we will.
Mary just dropped these off for all of you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Copy the work. And this is my notes, my scribbles.
Okay.
I'll just leave with you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for agreeing to take a second look.
Yeah. Oh, shoot, I forgot to say something. We're all on tape. Don't swear. That's my quick translation of this.
Will these numbers still show up on the town meeting floor so it can be voted on?
Perhaps. Which, which numbers?
And the $2,200, can we advocate for?
The requested amount will be there.
Uh, yes, the, well, the, yes, we will, will the requested amount show up?
It will be in the requested column.
It should be in the requested column, yes.
So, we can almost book it out until we have...
And I will stand up and tell people if they want their property taxes to go up, then God bless them. And, but, but that's fair. We can do that. You know, it's ultimately where a democratic, this is a democratic process and the townspeople will decide. And if, if, if you were to do that and we got outvoted, then God bless you. I'm okay with that. Because ultimately, it's their decision. We're just acting in, according to our, our mandate, you know, in their interest. But yes, you can do that. I look forward to it. Okay, sorry, I forgot to read this before we started. We're all on tape. Be good. Okay, I think at this point, we're gonna move on to the schools. Yeah, you can run off now. Thank you very much for coming. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
Let me see. Which piece of paper do I need in front of me now? Huh?
Feats don't fill me now.
Feats don't fill me now. There you go. Okay. Where do I have you, my friend? I was looking on this all day. Where did you go? Yes, I think I scribbled in, "Aha!"
There it is.
There we go. Yes, this normally would have become a document that I would have handed out to all of you, but it was still
Looks fine, Buzz.
It was still in its, in its genesis today on the phone, so you'll have to forgive me. So, let me tell you where we, where we sit. The gentle folk from the schools have all come because, of course, we backed them hard enough to make anybody squeal at a fairly loud set of decibels. So, thank you for coming. We didn't do that to make you come, but I'm glad you did show up, even so.
Well, in advance, thank you for the collegiality you've demonstrated in, in having the conversation.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, thank you for that.
Sure. And this is, for those that might not know, this is Cliff Laporte, who's on the school board, and this is Bob Conroy, the long-suffering finance director of the joint school district. And this is Jeff, who's saying, "Holy cow, this is my first year and does it get better?"
First year is regionalization.
Yes. Right, so, yes. And so, you know, they, in all good faith and doing their jobs, submitted to us a budget. They said, "This will be best for the kids." And we said, "Oh, my God, you're right, but we can't do it." So, what we, I added up the cuts that we sent to them. And we requested of them $229,956 in cuts, which is a bit more than twice what'll be cut from any other, all the other departments in Berlin combined. And I've been on the phone with June, with Dennis, with them, not yet with Cliff, but we may get there.
No, no.
Hopefully, we won't. But since Friday, every day except for Saturday, I think. And they've been looking for things they can cut out of their budget that the, the standard they tried to follow is what can we cut that we are confident will not impact instruction? That will not directly impact, you know, the, the teaching staff and the students. Now, indirectly, you know, if the building falls in on them, that might have some impact on that. But we aren't at that point. Where we got as of yesterday and this afternoon is Bob and Jeff, who, let me reiterate back to them, they have been extraordinarily polite and collegial and cooperative despite probably wishing to be doing anything but this. So, I appreciate that. This has not been an adversarial conversation. They found $167,000 in cuts that they could make at Berlin Memorial and Tejano. They asked me, and I agreed with them, for the following, which is to basically take the budgets of Tejano and Berlin Memorial and their associated capital assessments and consider it as one pot of money when we're looking at the cuts. Because ultimately, in our universe, we wanna make sure that the town of Berlin's budget balances, correct? And they said that having them split into those four pieces made it more challenging for them to come up with cuts that wouldn't impact instruction, that if they could view them universally, that that would help them out. Is that making sense?
It does. My, my only concern is what we talked about last week as far as they're not all, it's, they're not all equal in how we can, how we can pay for them in the budget.
Same word about that.
In that the, putting the capital items now in the budget means we're paying for them out of taxes, as opposed, budgetary funds out of, instead of free cash, which is what, which is something that came up here as far as, you know, it's all free cash, we can just pay for things. Well, that's not the case. It's, yes, it is money to the town, but it's not spendable in the same manner. So, if we're lumping all that together, it's not necessarily saying that it's not going to have a budgetary impact. It's just saying that it will have a dollar impact on the town, but it doesn't mean that it's not a budgetary impact. It doesn't mean that we then don't have to cut something else further because we're, we're, if we, if we fund $40,000 from the schools through the budget and not through
Free cash.
and not through free cash, now that means that somebody else has to pay the $40,000 out of their budget. Whether it's highway, whether it's, whether it's secretary, whether it's whoever, then that money has to come out of the budget as opposed to free cash that, that falls to the bottom line after all the budgets are accounted for for the year. So...
I would say, though, that if they're allowed to consider them all as a pot, then that's reducing the budgetary money that's going into it. Because we can't, it's very challenging to bring, it's not impossible, but it's challenging to bring free cash to bear now that they're all living within the budget.
Right. And so, and, and I guess all their stuff is budgetary, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, then. That's what I said. Don't worry about it.
We were arguing about that last week.
Okay.
You are making sort of, "I'm thinking about it" faces. And I know you're drinking from a fire hose and so do you have questions about it at the moment?
No, I'm gonna listen.
Okay. Mary's brand-new to the finance committee this year and came in partway through the budget year just to give her an added bonus.
Can I just ask a clarifying question on that? So, I, I think the way I understood what you were saying stands how it worked before we were a consolidated region. You'd be able to apply free cash to our specific capital articles.
Correct.
And now it's a single assessment.
Right. So, because it's shifting into it this year, our discussion last week was that a portion of your prior budget used to be paid for with free cash. Your prior total request was paid for under free cash and the vast majority of your request was paid for through the budget. Now, it's all being paid for through the budget. And so, that, with the capital request now being part of the budget, that means we had to cut other places by the amount.
That caused a bit of a burn at our discussion last, last week. But, but yeah. So, do you guys have anything to add before I go on to the discussion that we talked about? Please do, if you do.
I just can also remind you that we, we have an article right now that you have for $103,000 that's being returned to you. I don't know if you factor that into the free cash. But the, there's an article that we're not gonna be spending that we mentioned that we'd be returning.
And, and the, and the, the price was reduced to 85.
To 90, to 95.
95, okay, for, but that will be next, next year. And that's in the assessment. That's part of the 147?
It's one of the cuts as well.
It's one of the cuts as well.
Ah, okay. So, that's, that's included within the cuts that you're making. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. Do you have anything that you wanna, I sort of did the whole explanation myself because I'm on a roll, but I didn't have to. I apologize. If you guys wanna add anything, please do.
We, our goal was to, to make these reductions. And we did hear you. We, we appreciate the support we get from the town and the flexibility that you've given us. But our goal was to make the cuts without directly impacting the teaching and learning. And so, that's, that's about where we are right now.
Yeah, okay. So, the, the proposal for the finance committee, and I will say in advance, this is a little bit convoluted, so put your seatbelt on, was that we see if we can offer the schools, they've come up with $167,000 of the cuts that we asked them for and are comfortable at that level that it's not going to be impacting instruction. And they actually met with the school board last night to go over that, and the school board agreed with them that that was acceptable. And here's, here's a possibility that I came up with, that we should, that I'm asking us to consider, which is to consider giving them[1438.03][1440.00]$75,000 in relief from the cuts that we provided in the following way. And where's my computer? All right, I'm gonna open my computer for the benefit of members of the finance committee that haven't seen the ugly spreadsheet yet in detail. Or at least haven't chosen to look at it, be that as it may. Okay. So, they've seen the expenses page. I handed that out last year as a printout, last week with, as a printout, that had the suggested cuts in it. And, but if you go over, and I'll go over and look at a page, an income page. Let me see, where does this live? I'm actually gonna pause at this moment and say something for the future. When the next transition in leadership for the finance committee takes place, I will be around to answer your questions. Okay? Because I've, I've been able to pin Scott down, my predecessor, and get some answers from him. But I had never seen the full breadth and length of the spreadsheet that we use to create the town budget. Parenthetically, it is utter madness that the town of Berlin has a single point of failure that used to be Scott Hawkins and is now Buzz Harris in creating the spreadsheet that becomes the town's budget because we don't have budgeting software that is on my list of things to talk to the town administrator and the select board about when the town administrator is present. Because in the past, I think when the town's budget was a little simpler, this was reasonable. But do you recall Scott ever showing us the full spreadsheet? Yeah. I first saw it this year. It's a really interesting beast. It's in five parts. They interconnect in lots of ugly ways. So, that said, where does this number live? Assessors. Okay, here's what I'm gonna suggest to the committee. Here we go. Okay. Given the effort to the school board and the, and the school leadership to find as many cuts as they could, get to the point where they, they said, "We can do this much without impacting instruction. If we go beyond that, it becomes much more challenging to do that." Then I'd like to give them $75,000 in relief. Here's how I propose to do it. There's a number in the budget that's called the assessor's overlay. It's in the income section. It's actually an expense, so why it's in the income section beats me, but I checked the formula and it counts that it's a negative, so that's good. The assessor's overlay is a figure that exists in the budget in case particularly a major business property taxpayer succeeds in getting an abatement against their property taxes. We have to immediately provide that abatement to them. Usually, it's in one payment at the time. It's not spread out over time. And it comes out of the town's current budget. So, the assessors advise us a number to put in here that is a, a hedge against that possibility. Does that make sense to everybody? You can say yes if it doesn't, or no if it doesn't, whichever one. Yeah. So, basically, you know, if somebody up in Highland Commons says, "You're taxing me too much. You rap so-and-so's." "I'm gonna go to state tax court and try and get an abatement if the board of assessors here in town doesn't agree." They can then go to the state, state officialdom and see if they can get an abatement. And we then have to provide it if they win that case, right? Or if they convince the assessors. I have to talk to the assessors about that and urge them to use a short word called "no" as frequently as, as possible, but be that as it may. Right now, we have $250,000 in the assessor's overlay account. And I talked with Molly in the assessor's office last week. And she told me the following. Well, the assessors didn't actually set the number that high. We all live in our silos in the town of Berlin, right? Information doesn't necessarily flow easily back and forth. When they last spoke to Scott, it was $250,000. She said, "Were I you, I would leave it at 250, just in the interest of being cautious." And I think that's actually good advice and normally I would. However, what I would like to do is take 50 out of that. And then, there's another mechanism. That's 50 of the 75,000 that I'm proposing that we use. And to do that, we would simply reduce the assessor's overlay from 250,000 to 200,000. It's on its face making sense so far to people, even if you don't understand how the spreadsheet works. Okay. Then what I would like to do, and there, there is a mechanism when we're really in a jam that we can use if we absolutely have to, to, we can pull money from, we can use money in the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund to offset expenses in public safety, right? Which we're currently, currently we're using $10,000 this year, I believe, out of the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund to offset the budgets of police and fire. Highland Commons Public Safety Fund to offset the budgets of police and fire. The last time they did that, they used a much more substantial number than that. We can reduce the amount of money that we're choosing to put into the. I'm 52 and I have this thing, I call it noun aphasia, where a noun drops out the back of my head. For some reason, it doesn't happen with verbs or adjectives or adverbs or articles or punctuation, but nouns it does. What's our reserve account for the town? Thank you, the stabilization fund. That I couldn't remember that noun off the top of my head. We can reduce the amount that we're putting into stabilization. Currently, we're setting it at 150. We could set that at 125. And we could use the Highland Commons Fund as a pass through to move that into the budget to apply it against, to give the schools 25K in relief. It's an accounting maneuver, I admit, but it's not illegal. It's merely unusual. So that's that's what I'm proposing to to get to the 75K. The actual, if anyone was bringing out their hand calculator to check in the meantime, the actual difference between the 167 and the 229, 956, the first number is the number of cuts they've found out, they've found so far. The second number is the number that we asked for. The actual, the exact amount of dollars between those two is $62,956. The reason I'm going for 75 is on Dennis's advice, there's a lot of money this year that's moving from the town, chapter 70 money and some chapter 32B money, over to the schools. Chapter 70, for those that don't know, is education funding from the state. That's about $450,000. That's gonna be, used to be paid to the town. Starting next fiscal year, it'll be paid directly into the unified school district. Okay? Chapter 32B money is health insurance, dental insurance, all of that money. There's money moving back and forth because of the combination of the school district. That's also causing the spreadsheet to have connections, just in case you cared. Dennis advised me to have the number more like 75 rather than 62 or 63 because the two insurance plans have a differential cost. In other words, the cost of somebody being on town insurance versus being on the school schools insurance is different. And we're not completely sure at this point who's gonna choose what insurance plan and they will have some choice this year. Next year, that will go away. But for this year, we can't predict what they're going to do. And that's a safety margin in order to cover the maximum potential that we might have to face if the maximum number of people that Dennis guessed, by sticking his finger out the window and doing math in his head the way that Dennis does, which I don't follow always completely, were to come to pass. Am I still making sense? So if enough people switch over to the more expensive insurance plan, we could incur up about 75K. Okay? Well, the difference would be 62 and 75K, which is about $12,000. All making sense so far? So that's.
But I think you need a whiteboard.
I'm sorry, I probably do.
Buzz, just one little clarification.
Yes.
People selecting the plans, are we talking about school employees or are we talking about town employees? Are we talking about both?
Basically, the the school employee. Bob, can you clarify it for me? Because you know it better than I do.
Yeah. So I would explain it similarly. It's really, this difference relates to July and August benefits.
Oh, yeah.
The school year staff, we had to figure out how to transition payroll and benefits. We met with town accountants from both towns, talked to Dennis and treasurer from both towns as well. And we figured that, you know, the contracts for teachers are August to August. Their pay and benefits should stay in the town, but we didn't initially budget that way. So both the town and the school budgeted to have it in the school's budget. We are now shifting it back for the summer to the town's budget for two months for school year employees. Our plan costs a little bit less than the town's. We both contribute 75%. So the difference between our two plans is what that 13,000 is for. Plus, you could have somebody else decide to enroll that didn't enroll before for a couple of months. It could happen. Once we get into September, any additional enrollments that are school related, it would be our responsibility. And, you know, that's our, that's a concern for us too, but.
At that point, it's your budget problem.
Yeah.
Shift of responsibility.
Oh, honey, at this point, I'll take any I can get. Okay? I can just tell you. Anyway, so that's, I know that's a long explanation and Lisa is right, it would be helpful if I had a whiteboard. I I promise you that Bob and Dennis and I are not trying to snow people.
There are some in one of those other rooms.
Yeah. So if people are comfortable with those changes, and we should talk about that now, what what that would end up doing is giving the schools some rebate against the total amount of cuts that we'd asked for in order to avoid cuts that it can get impact instruction. Right?
So just on on the capital side, last year at annual town meeting, the day before we voted on the school, we voted to make a repair to the school, to our elementary school for 103,000, I think it was.
That's right.
To fix the air access to the air conditioning in the gymnasium. And it was almost unanimous vote to do that because it was needed to be done.
That's right.
For safety reasons and so forth. But but it wasn't done and right now you're offering to give it back to us.
Temporarily, yes.
Yeah, temporarily, but we're gonna have to come up with it again at some point because the the 92,000 or whatever it's gonna cost is not in the budget right now. We're gonna leave that out of the this year's budget.
We understand that you're gonna be looking at our total budget and that we have a year where our operating assessment's low.
Yeah.
The other thing I would say is that we talked to the contractor who felt, and he's gonna work with our facilities manager and we're gonna see if we can come up with some type of solution where we rent something, or we rent some equipment and we might have to spend a couple more thousand dollars than our, he comes a couple of times a year for preventative maintenance and then if we have a problem. So it's not ideal. And we tried to weigh, you know, 97,000, otherwise we'd come from cutting a staff position to a teacher potentially.
So going forward, I mean, this this is our school and we would like to have some capital improvements when they're, especially when they're voted on a town meeting, we would like to have them made. But so I hear, but I keep, we're in a tough spot. So rather than affect it, the teaching will affect the facility. And that's gonna be traditionally, that's an easy, an easy thing to do. But as far as we're concerned, at least the capital planning committee is looking at the status of the school and maintaining the school as it is. So just be be aware of that, that, you know, we're kind of yielding on that. It's not quite as important as as the teaching side of things.
Yeah. And if I could add, the school committee is committed to not deferring maintenance on the schools. That's, we we know that the town's generously funded the building of these buildings.
Yes.
And that there's a moral as well as a financial responsibility.
Yeah, pretty sure.
To maintain the quality of the buildings. And we've done a lot in the last few years, but where we were presented with this particular challenge, it was like, well, maybe there's something we can do about that.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'd like to just say too, that we have something in there. It's like, I don't know what it's called, but whatever we listed it to.
Could you raise your voice just a little bit?
Oh, sure. It's an existing conditions analysis or a building survey, basically. That's one of the capital items and that's intended to look at the building, the roof, the plumbing, the electrical, like all the different systems and structures, the building envelope, and provide a projection for what our capital needs will be going forward. And as part of that, we'd ask them to look at this. Maybe we'd come up with a different solution. That's.
Okay, yeah. We we supported that 40,000 study for the past couple of years.
Yeah. So we're, yeah. And ultimately, it was a hard decision. And I understand your point.
Yeah. That's where we are.
Yeah. Unfortunately, because of our our balance of of income and expenses, that, you know, it's being squeezed. It's one of the things that, given a whole host of choices that stink for a year, it's there we are.
Yeah, I understand where we are. So appreciate your.
Anybody else, Mary or Stan, have questions on this?
No, not Buzz.
Okay. Anything else that you folks would like us to know besides, please God, let us not do this again? Which we've all said to one another a couple of times in the past few days. Okay. That being the case, what I would like to do is we would need to take two votes if I'm tracking things procedurally as the finance committee. One is to reduce the assessor's overlay from $250,000 to $200,000. That's the first 50K.
All right. Well, then I'd like to go back when you said this or anything else that we'd like.
Go right ahead.
So I didn't realize we would need to vote on this. So my my concern at this point would be taking this vote now, acting on these funds for this one part of the budget. How does this impact on what we can or can't do for the rest of the budget?
We could, if we want to cut further into that margin, we can do that. I'm not, from my point of view, I'm not viewing this as one action and then saying, ha, we did the big one, now we're done.
Okay. And I didn't think you were, but I also.
No, but it's a good question.
I also know that we had discussed last week that there were some, there were some options for, I mean, we weren't throwing this out to say people can just come gripe and then we're not gonna be able to do anything about it. I mean, we did say that there might be some things we can do.
Right.
And so I wanted to be clear as to, is this the dollar amount is everything we can do or is this what the?
No, the assessors.
As the holy keeper of the spreadsheet. We're doing.
Oh, if this is holiness, honey, I don't want it. Okay? No, the assessors asked for 150K. That was what they asked for last year and that's this, still the current number according to Molly.
So that's a number that gets put in there every year.
As an expense.
As an expense.
That's correct.
And then is there a, and so if it's not expended, is it a free cash thing or does it go and does it just keep building?
If it's not expended, it goes into free cash.
So that's a, so that goes into that.
Right. It doesn't. Tell me about that, June.
June, what happens?
When overlay is actually done, it's done off the recap sheet, the final dollar amount that makes things balance. And whatever isn't used stays in overlay. The only time that it's released is if the assessors release the overlay.
So whatever we put in overlay every year sits in there?
It does.
Do you know what the current balance in overlay is?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
I'm shocked, June. Shocked.
We are actually, Molly and I were just talking about this.
Yep.
During the week, to see if there was any amount of money that was there that could be released.
Right.
Because the assessors can be requested to release any excess.
Right.
I believe she has a couple of ATB cases outstanding.
Okay.
With the new modernization, a couple of years ago, it was before it used to be by levy and it had to stay by levy. Now they've made it with the new modernization that it's kind of a whole pot.
Yep.
But you have to keep it for whatever is outstanding.
Okay.
So there is a little bit, there's a lot more to it, but technically it stays there so it doesn't go away.
Oh, that's good to know.
Unless it's released.
Okay.
So it could be extra money.
All right. I mean, it's.
Okay. Would you do me a favor then? Could you find out what the current balance is in overlay? And then we'll have to look and see what what cases are outstanding that we have to responsibly keep money in in case the cases go against the town. And then I think we should, we should heed whatever the assessors' general caution is about future cases. So that's good to know. However, it is still the case that this year we have 250 in overlay and they were asking for 150. And again, I did ask Molly about that and she said, don't touch it unless you feel like you have no other choice.
Because I was gonna say, anything over and above that, then we could have to freeze it automatically on the recap sheet if it's needed and it's not there.
Yes, if we don't have it, we'll, if we don't have it, we'll have to come up with it from somewhere.
It will come out of, taxes will have to be raised to.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's why.
It's not a question.
No, that's why it's there. It's automatic. So speaking for myself, I'm comfortable with the 50. We can, we can discuss more. It's, you know, there aren't a lot of sources of potential income at this point, is the truth. So I had to look for ways that we could, that we could move money that we have available and that involves making safety margins thinner is basically the choice that we have at this point. And I'm comfortable with this one, given that it's more than the assessors were asking for this year, but that's up to other people's feelings about it as well.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'm questioning is if it's more than they were asking, why is, what, I don't understand the comment of don't cut anything unless you, I mean, it seems like one, they should just be happy with the 150 and and.
Well, we can do that if you want. Can I point taxpayers that you owe for wrong?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. I mean, the other question I would have for June is if we, if we exceed the amount of 150 this year, you're saying we can't use anything that's in there from prior?
We can now with the modernization law, you can't. Before you couldn't. And we had to raise it per year, but.
So it would be, it would be helpful to know total what's in that bucket.
The only thing is also is that I don't know how much new buildings we're gonna get into that may not be properly taxed and then have to be abated. That's with all the new growth going in and things like that, that.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, that's all stuff that's in Molly's.
Because it's not just commercial. It's if your taxes were too high at your house and.
Which they are.
And if you come in and you look at it and you find that they are taxing you for a shed you didn't have, when you go in and apply for an abatement, that's where that comes from.
Right. No, I get that. I just, my, my, my point is, is that how, how strict do we need to be with that number if there, if we've just traditionally never done anything with the balance because we couldn't? And now with modernization, we are allowed to. We've just not really been paying that much, I'm not seeing you not paying attention to it, but I mean, is there?
There is actually an issue with it because if we have too much, then it hits our free cash if there's more than what we have outstanding. But because we've had a couple of ATB cases that were substantial, one was, I think, for Sears, we didn't give it back just because of that, because then we'd have to come up with another 50,000 that would have to hit the taxes.
So, you know, I.
But I can get you the numbers just so you know what's there.
So anyway, the the reason that I left it alone is I was just taking Molly's advice, assuming that professionally in her head, she's weighing risks that I don't know.
Yeah. No, I'm not saying to go past the 150.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm suggesting that we shouldn't be as, we might not need to be as concerned about going down to 150 from the 250 as otherwise thinking.
What do the 250?
Especially given the nature of the budget.
So the vote's gonna be for 50?
Well, well, that, that is, we're sitting here like, please do something. If I were to read your thought bubbles, that's what I'd be thinking if I were sitting here.
Well, here we are, you know.
But do, do we want to dip into that margin to give more relief than we're, than just to the schools?
So we dip there and then they come up short and then what happens? As the new person here, what is the next step?
It hits people's property taxes.
It hits people's properties.
Correct. It goes straight to property taxes.
How long does it take to do that?
At this point, it would just happen.
Sorry, just one year. One year?
Yeah. At this point, it would, it would just happen because we currently have, the official word for it is unused levy capacity. But what that means in practice is for much of the past six or seven years, with the exception of last year, we haven't touched the full two and a half percent that we could have drawn on for property tax increases in the town every year. We've been, we've taken less than that frequently. And because we don't use it, doesn't mean it goes away. It it continues to exist as a dollar amount that we can draw on. And so there's, there's nothing thus, if, if an event like the one they're talking about were to happen, there's, you know, even if Prop 2 and 1/2 might normally stand in the way, it wouldn't right now because we have money we haven't drawn on from taxpayers that we could above the two and a half percent, though the torches and pitchforks would then Though, the torches and pitchforks would then appear regardless of the law, I assure you.
Well, they already have, you know.
Yes, even staying within the 2.5%.
My appointment at this committee, the month thing Mr. Moderator said to me, don't raise taxes.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah.
So I hear him.
So last year was the first year that we faced the 2.5 limit. And thus the, the cap on capital, we use the same one this year as we used last year.
Yes.
That we just don't have the room anymore because of Prop 2.5.
But here's, here's my general question. If we're going to do this and draw on the money from the assessors overlay, A, we could draw the full 75 from there instead of doing the gymnastics I was talking about, trying to pull money out of free cash and through the Highland Commons Mitigation Fund and into the budget, which again is legal, just accounting shenanigans that I don't want to do often if we can possibly avoid it.
And didn't we also have, on your, on your spreadsheet, we had, we had used most of it, hadn't we? So does this mean there's something that we can't fund?
We would have had to, we'd have to cut down on the amount of money that we're, again, that we're planning to put into stabilization.
Into stabilization.
Right.
So that's how we would offset it.
Correct.
So we're not, we're not talking about not funding any of the articles.
Correct.
We're just talking about reducing stabilization.
You added in one.
Okay.
Yeah, so we could pull the full 75 from here.
Yeah, well, I'm comfortable voting on this at this point.
Okay. So do we want to, would we like to pull the full 75 out of this, which we can do?
Yeah, I don't see any reason not to. I think let's, let's make it, let's make it clear on this. And then if we need to do something out of that, maybe that's just a one vote to cover things that we're trying to put back. We get to that stage.
Can you say that a different way?
Possibly. If we can clean, if we can keep this cleaner by not doing it from two different sources, let's do that.
Okay.
Because that way, if we need to tap the second source, we could just do that for perhaps a group of things.
Okay.
Later on, that is not necessarily.
Or we could come back here and say, ha, 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 you thought we were done with you.
That is true.
We can, I'm not saying we should. Okay, then, do I hear a proposal? The proposal would involve lowering the assessors overlay from $250,000 to 175.
I move that we do just that.
Do I hear a second on that?
Second?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That looked a lot like unanimous, so I won't give you the abstain or no over, no options. Okay, I'm hereby making that change in the spreadsheet while we're sitting here, if it'll let me. Oh, it says I don't have connectivity. Well, we can fix that. All right, pardon me for a moment. I'll make that change later, all right. So, that 175 we will apply against, as we discussed, against the schools.
75.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you for being corrected. We're not being that generous.
If only we'd had connectivity, you'd have had a 175.
Yeah, no, we'll apply that 75 as we discussed against, in, in favor of you, let's put it that way. I could make the mathematical language come out in English if I really felt like it, but that's good enough. You're smiling, so that means you understand.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you very much.
So you're all set. Thank you very much for coming in. And again, thank you for, we've worked very closely on this for several days, because it was ugly.
Thank you as well.
Okay, yeah, and Bob, you and I can talk tomorrow about some of the details.
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. So you got that?
I've got it in the notes.
Yay, okay.
Well noted.
All righty then. So let me see, somewhere in here, aha! So that was the schools select board C B A. And oh, look!
I'm gonna guess it's Fire and EMS.
Fire and EMS might conceivably be next.
Wait, question.
Okay.
I feel like Tiny Tim showing up now. What's that?
Well, Chief, Chief Bukowski and his predecessor used to show up with half the fire staff, because they thought, they thought.
You want us to bring them?
It was, they thought it might, no. They thought it might be intimidating and they thought it might look like solidarity in between the two. They thought, they thought it was a good idea, so we'd have a wall of people back there. No, it wasn't. We knew exactly what it was and it was fine, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. So we were asked to look for 10,000 in our budget that were maybe not needs, but wants, as Peg eloquently said.
Right.
We found some that maybe could be considered warrants, but until we need them. So we're gonna run it through those with you.
So, before you do that, let me just, just, I think people will remember this, but just in case, because I know you know what it is. But we had, we had proposed a cut of $10,000 against Fire and EMS, which they were free to apply against both wages and expenses. That was, that was one of the cuts proposed last time that we voted on, just so people know what we're talking about. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So, so we came up with the $10,000 as requested and a, two, two other possibilities for your consideration. In the $10,000 cut, we were gonna cut out of the salary and wages line, we were gonna cut $5,000 in overtime. There was a line item for station coverage, so when we have severe weather events and we ramp up staffing, that, there's a line in there, we're gonna cut 2,000 from that, 500 from call wages, 500 from EMS call wages, 500 from on-call uniforms, 500 from a line labeled miscellaneous, 500 for rehab supplies, food and drink, and 500 from our badges, pins and plaques and whatnot. And then I just went through and did a $10,000, a $7,000 and a $5,000, as you can see, hoping that.
So we could take a little off the wages, possibly if you gave us something in between, or give us more of a buffer for a, for a call bump.
But it is, it is doable and we certainly want to help. The only, the only concern is obviously when we get to the end of next fiscal year, we always worry about the overtime, which is the, so, but that's for your consideration.
Okay. If you would, tell us about your comfort level in terms of the effectiveness of Fire and EMS, if there's any difference among those?
So.
Other than, none at all would be good, which is an answer I can give you.
So unfortunately, it's so difficult for us to calculate anything, there's no hard data. If there were no fire calls for the rest of the year, then we would have a huge excess of funds. Our call volume, it goes up, it goes down. Historically, it's been going up a small percentage every year.
Just, just for fire, you mean?
For, for both, Fire and EMS.
Okay.
Or for, for, it's all lumped into one. Our call volume is all lumped into one. So typically, our calls for service go up every year. With the, a lot of the building projects have now come to fruition and with other building projects coming along the way, our numbers are gonna continue to rise. So it's tough to say that, you know, that we're satisfied with, you know, that amount of money in the overtime. We just don't know.
Right.
We're, we track it out. And again, we certainly, we appreciate everything that the town has done for us. So the $10,000 cut, we, we're willing to, to make that cut and we can do it. And hopefully that things will stay steady. But it's, it's tough to budget, we just don't know how many calls we're gonna have.
Do you have a preference in terms of the possibilities, other than none at all, which I hate to tell you.
If you look at, if you look at the list, this list that goes from needs to wants more, because we can squeeze badges. We can, you know, we can, we can look at other revenue sources if I have to, to try to find those items. Uniforms, when you're at the top of the list, that's something that's, we can take off, but we may be likely to come back to see you again later in the year. So we can make the numbers work for your needs, but not necessarily have full control over it.
Okay, does anybody else have questions about?
I mean, is this taken into account, so this is still an increase, it's just not as much of an increase? When you talk about calls being increased yearly?
Yeah, and if you, I think the budget originally that Paul submitted was knocked down by the slide board. And, and then it was, our, our wage increase was taken off the table and we just, we took a call up by law, but we didn't get our step increase that he was trying to give us. So I think, I feel as if we're working towards making, having a balance with the town that is, is right for all.
Yeah, one thing I, I was, I've been visiting people that we've been reining on, which means I've had a lot of visitations recently. Hi, June. June's like, yeah, anyway. Oh, I shouldn't do that on camera, sorry. They won't bleep it, I asked them to. Anyway, it's me, I do that, you know it by now.
You get a dump thing on that?
No, they totally don't, it's okay. I told you what happens. No, there's no censoring, don't worry about it, they know I swear, life will go on. Okay, so I, I did sit with, with Fire and EMS. And one thing I've asked them to do is put together information on numbers of calls, needs for Fire and EMS in town, and to write something that Paul never did, that I was, that I wished he would, which was to provide some information to the town about the transition to full-time fire coverage from volunteer fire coverage and what, what level of resource we need in order to be able to cover the need, particularly with the new apartments coming online, blah, blah, blah. And I know, I didn't ask them to have it ready for tonight, which if their eyes got big when I started talking about it, is why that happened. But I told them that we should have it ready, you know, for town meeting or for sometime around that time period, so that, that can be addressed. However, that doesn't touch the cuts we need to make for now, for this, for FY '20. So any other questions folks have for them?
Nope, looks good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, if you want to stick around and see what happens at the end of the movie, you're welcome to do that. If you don't, you can go home, we'll tell you tomorrow.
Tell us tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you for doing this work, I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
I, I, my, my email and phone were busy this week, as you might imagine. Some folk were kind enough to come in person, we, we appreciate that. That shows a level of concern that, you know, cranky email doesn't quite demonstrate. I received some cranky email that I simply put in my cranky email file, because it basically was like, well, it's not a very significant reduction in what our department accomplished, but boy, are we cranky about it. And I was like, good on you, goodbye. No, it's the, they're real, but, you know, they're people who, I, I try to set a standard for people to come back to us of where it's, it's really something that we need to consider, and I think people have done that. Ron Vavruska did send me email from the planning board. We proposed cutting their total budget from $2,000 to $1,000. And he wrote me to say that there are some state programs that they're looking at tapping into this year, working with the, what is the name of the town's new business expansion?
Economic Development.
Economic Development, they're working with the Economic Development Committee and a subset of the governor's office that's about local economic development to look at implementing some plans within the town of Berlin that would come out of that $2,000. And it's, you know, he said, it's not a lot of money, do, you know, basically be nice to the town, be nice to us. And I was like, that wasn't the language he used, that's by free translation of it. Ron is much more proper and dry than that, but that's essentially what he was saying. He would, they would really appreciate it if we could restore some of that $1,000 that we removed from their budget. That's the only other request that I got that was, you know.
And that was something new that they were requesting, or this?
No, their, their budget request for a number of years has been $2,000, we just cut it. That was one of the cuts that I suggested.
But we've always funded that?
We have always funded it, yes. Yep, sometimes you poke a dog and see if it squeals, you know? And if they don't, you figure.
Or whoops, or bites at you.
Exactly, right. So unfortunately, we had to do a few of those. Most of them kept napping, but, you know, that was not generally what we did, just by the way, that's not a standard. That's when you're down to like, holy cow, how do I get the last $15,000? You're like parcelling it out, where you think it will possibly not do harm. And you find out that it did do harm when the dog or the cat stands up and goes, like, oh, okay, got it. Okay, so just to let you know what else is on the agenda for tonight, let me check the time.
The minutes?
The minutes are still on, yes, the minutes from last week are on the agenda. We also have, I'll have to look on my notes, a handful of articles that we need to take votes on, where there were, there were bills that were received after the end of the fiscal year, but we didn't have the amount of the bill yet. So we deferred voting on it until we saw the amount of the bill. And then there is snow and salt, which we just need to say, yes, we're gonna vote on snow and salt. And we're in favor of removing, of dealing with snow and salt. And then there's a special fund that the schools want to set up that we can start putting money into, we and/or the schools, to defray potential unexpected future special education demands on the school budget, which can be, you know, $250,000, $100,000 in one year, depending on who moves into town or who uses school choice or whatnot to move into our school system if they have strong special education needs for that student. So that's what's left on the, oh, and we have a reserve on transfer, I'm sorry, there's that as well. Oh, and, I'm sorry, there's one other thing. Do you remember our friend, the electrical, the electric bills for the town buildings? It was set at 60K and we were waiting for June to get us an estimate. I had in the budget cuts and allocations that we were dealing with last week, I had allowed for $10,000. June's imagination is larger than mine, probably because she gets to look at the bills and I don't. So the end request for that was $78,000, so that's another $8,000. Well, we accounted for 10 of that last week, but we need to account for, I mean, we don't have to. We could say, turn off the lights at 3:30, it'll be fine, but let's not. Okay, so my question now becomes, do we want to look at pulling out some additional money to provide relief where it's been requested? What's people's feeling on that, for fire, for the different, you know, for June, for Dennis, for Mary, for Leanne? Who's the person working for you guys, right?
Leanne, yes.
Okay, I'm a little shaky on names when it gets too far away from my daily experience. What are our thoughts about that? We can pull a chunk of money and.
Divvy it up?
And, and divvy it up in some fashion, giving people, giving them Solomon's half a child instead of all of the child, or however we choose to do it.
All right, I mean, we had, we had sort of done that at our last meeting, thinking we were giving them Solomon's half a child. So maybe we have to give Solomon's three quarters.
Well, I'll give you a clue, that sometimes what looks to us like Solomon's half a child looks like nothing to other folks, which is not, that is human and real, that's not like, what are you thinking? That's just, that's a reality.
Right.
So Buzz, what's left to tap to do this kind of thing?
Well, if we wanted to, there are two things I can see. We could take the assessors overlay down to the 150 level that the assessors had actually asked for instead of Molly's advice to be more cautious and stay at 250, which I suspect was just a general caution based on her instinct, rather than worry about particular cases, because the assessors know the cases that are in front of them and that's the number they set. So there's 25 there. There's also potentially, up to 20, you know, we could reduce the amount that we're putting into, further, that we're putting into stabilization. Right now it's at 150. And it is possible, though I, it's not my favorite thing in the world to do, to pass that funding through the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund, part of which does go into the budget, to have it show up in the budget. I can draw you a graph if you want to see how that happens, but, and, and I will when we sit down and have coffee at some point, just so you actually know. But I will tell you, it's not illegal, it's just dodgy. It's that a distinction that exists in your universe.
It, it does, actually.
Okay.
I know it will.
So.
So is this part of the 20% of the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund that we are targeting towards our budget?
Functionally, it wouldn't be that. What, what's going on with the Highland Commons Fund this year is because we're buying a fire truck.
All of it's.
A very large percentage of it is, is going into capital. And that's gonna happen, any year that we're buying a fire truck, that's likely to happen. So this year, currently, we have 10K from Highland Commons that's just, that's going into the budget directly as, to offset some of the public safety expenses.
The possibility, it's a last minute thing, but I'm sure Dennis could do it, is to borrow for the fire truck. But I don't like paying interest.
Let's not, let's not.
That's, you know, that.
Well, that, that.
A five-year note or something to pay for the fire truck.
That's.
But that's, that's not fiduciary responsibility.
No, no, that's, that's.
It amazes the immediate, but.
That's a step further than I would like to go.
Yeah, me too, I just, I had to mention it.
Oh, no, 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 it is, it is a, it is, that is a step that is also legal, just also dodgy.
Yeah.
In a different way.
Yeah, it's kind of a last minute, you know, that's, that's before you jump overboard.
Yes, I don't think we're, I don't think we're at that point.
Yeah. What is the, what are the ramifications of using more money in this dodgy manner of the, from the Highland, from the safety fund?
What we would, what we would do is take some amount of dollars that we would normally put into stabilization. I'll give you, I'll give you the full, the full picture of what it would look like. You would take the money, you would put into stabilization and say you subtracted $10,000 from that. You would take that $10,000 and you would apply it then. You would take that $10,000 and you would apply it then against $10,000 in another warrant article where that 10K is currently coming from the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund. Then you would transfer that $10,000 into the section of the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund. Isn't this a fun board game? That is normally offsetting public safety funds in the budget.
It's all from stabilization. We're not, we're not tapping the Highlands Safety Fund any further than we were.
No, we can't.
Basically coming from, because we've expended.
Correct.
Because we're buying the fire truck.
And by the way, if they don't pay the check on time, then we'll be having a really special annual town meeting when they finally do, and won't that be fun?
Well, that might be where we have to borrow for the fire truck.
Thank you. Good.
Is to call and make sure that the check is in the mail.
Great. Yeah, we call that dunning. I used to do collections not long ago, God help me, as part of my job. So that's the, that's how that money movement happens. It is not a desirable regular accounting function, but it is not illegal.
It's, they, they do that quite often with school choice, the school choice and the school budget, too. It can only be spent on certain things.
Right.
And so they apply it to the salaries of the teachers.
Yep.
You know, you can't spend it on curtains or the superintendent's office or things like that.
Right. No.
It has to be spent on certain things.
And this is, this is not...
So it's money that you move it around.
Yes. This is, this is called fungibility. And it's not what I like to do as my first-line budgeting choice, but it is there. So we have up to 25K that we could pull additionally out of the assessor's overlay and still stay within what the assessors have asked for. Or, and/or, we could pull a little bit of money
From stabilization.
From stabilization, from what we're going to put into stabilization.
Or both.
Or both, if we want. I wouldn't want to do both, but we could, speaking for myself. Do people have...
Well, I think if we take it from stabilization, it shows taxpayers, the citizens of the town that are in tough straits.
Well, we're not, hold on, hold on. We're taking it from money that we would be adding to stabilization.
Yes, that's what I mean. We're reducing it. We wanted to put 250.
We did. That was aspirational.
And here we are. We're fighting two and a half, and we're getting ready to jump overboard. So this is, this is kind of the last, before you walk the plank.
Yes.
But, and I'm not a fan of it. I'm a fan of saving money for when we need it in the future.
I know. Yep. Well, let me, well, let me say this. I mean, one thing that I thought about is, you know, I've, in my time on the Finance Committee, starting after about my second year, I was constantly pushing for us to put money into stabilization, and all I was able to get, because it's hard to do, right? It's an additional large expense, was when we, when we zeroed out some old warrant articles, the residual money in those warrant articles went into stabilization. That was a few tens of thousands of dollars. But as long as I'm chair, I would like to do more than that, because I am very sure that pretty soon this really lovely expansion that we've had for eight years is, is going to become something else, and I want the town to be well buffered against that. That said, if we put another 125 in next year, we'll have put in 250. If we just, if we're resolute about putting something substantial in every year, that adds up to more than what we would have put in this year. So that's where I'm taking comfort from this set of choices.
I like it because it shows on, on the books what we're doing.
Oh, sure.
And that, that to me is, you know, and people can see that.
It sends a little bit more of a message, I think, than taking it from the assessor's overlay.
We're taking it out of stabilization. That's huge.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a little more apparent, don't you think?
It, it is, yes. That's true. If we stand up and say, "We stole from the assessor's overlay," people will look at, people will look at Molly to see if she squirms, you know? That, that is, that is clear. I agree. But those are the choices that we have, as I see them. I don't see another way.
Right.
And we're going to stay within the 2.5%.
So where were, where were your numbers where you had said it was 77,000 of?
I think it's up there. It's just the scribble paper.
Well, that's, that's what Chris was asking for. Where did the piece of paper go?
That's curious.
Isn't that without the eight that you requested for?
That is, well, that's...
That's the minutes.
Yeah, these are, these are minutes from last meeting. I don't...
She gave you a...
She did. She gave me a piece of paper, which is a dangerous thing to do. In any case, it was about 70K.
Yeah, it was like 77.
I'm just trying to remember where, where all those cuts came from and to reestablish how much.
I can, thank you. I can, I can show you where they came from, because I have the piece of paper.
Because I, of course, didn't.
In my folder. Yeah, you're, you're that way.
I am.
Let me find it. Oh, I would love to live to see the day where I have less paper in my life, in this job. I really would. All right, where did I put it? Fine, here we go. There you go. So what they're talking about is these.
Right.
And that one, and then there's, and that one. And then the 2,200 is from the ZBA.
And she's still talking about putting this back in, too?
They would, they would like to, yes. And then the money for ZBA is there.
Okay. Well, all this really added up to 110?
It did, yes. That's before the school cuts.
Correct. I mean, right. Everything that we've done for the school was, was separate from that.
Yeah. If you go to the bottom, it'll show what it was. It's 111 and change.
What about, okay.
Yeah. I mean, I will say, speaking for myself, I would be comfortable doing something up to about 25 and giving people relief where we're able to. Out of that, I am not comfortable going to 77. Not at all. And I understand that, that, you know, I know what that means, but I've already lost the sleep over it. Okay.
I guess my, my, my thinking is, I don't think I have the same level of concern over stabilization as you do, just for me personally. So I would be comfortable with not putting as much money into that in order to try to give relief.
How much? What are you thinking roughly?
Probably closer to, probably closer to 50.
Okay. What do you...
Is that, so Chris's list here?
Chris's list is there. And then if you need, you may have this document with you. I do want to say something else, just so that you all know. There has historically not been outstanding planning for succession in the Finance Committee, meaning that, like, neither Bill Tomasino nor Scott, and I'm not trying to, to tag them by name. I'm on camera, I know. Sorry about that. But as an institution, we haven't sort of tried to make sure that all the members of the committee are aware of all the tools that we use and what all the parts are. And that means that whoever becomes chair suddenly gets a whole toolbox full of stuff unlabeled, used, and usually in reasonable working order dumped in that person's lap. I've had that experience this year, and that's my job, right? I'll, I'll figure it out. I'm not happy about it. In future, we need to do a much better job of training successors and ensuring that the committee as a whole is more familiar with the spreadsheet that we have used. And it is my hope that we will have a piece of software, as nearly all the other towns and cities in Massachusetts use some form of budgeting software, that allows all their requests to go in one end, display for you what the impacts are when you're making your own decisions about making recommendations. You'd be better informed, and it would be far easier for us to track things when they get to us as well. Because right now, there's a huge amount of manual input into a spreadsheet that has been authored by one person several years ago and changed by two cents before I ever put my hands on it. And while I wasn't a finance analyst for GTE, and I do know Excel really well, it's hard for me to track complicated formulas developed by two other people across five different interlocked spreadsheets to make sure they're doing what they ought to do. So I am still nervous about the, the spreadsheet giving us an accurate town budget. Because, for instance, this year, a whole pile of Chapter 70 money, $450,000, which has been in the town budget for decades, has suddenly, whoop, moved over to the combined school district. And on paper, that's easy. The money just goes over there, right? In terms of spreadsheet formula, where that's tied in everywhere, when you remove it, I think I caught everything, but I can't be sure. And then there's a whole bunch of Chapter 32B money, which is health insurance, dental insurance, et cetera, that has also moved. Right? And that whole discussion about $75,000 versus $63,000 roughly, was Dennis, was me, the town treasurer, and the finance director of the schools trying to make sure that we have an adequate safety margin for that shift between the institutions. So I'm still going to be spending time over the next three or four days, making absolutely sure that the budget that we turn over to the town is not messed up by the ancient tool that we're currently working with, right? I'm going to do my level best to make sure that's accurate. But the possibility exists. I may have to come back to you by email the next few days and say, oops, you know, the spreadsheet is, is messed up in a way that has meant that we still have $50,000 we have to do something with here and there. I think it's okay. I really, I think it's okay, but I can't swear to it. That's also in the back of my head, and I, and I understand that's, that's a complete wild card, right? I get that I'm handing you a complete wild card, and I apologize for that. But that's what I was given, and I'm doing my level best to make sure that it turns out accurately. I've gotten one outside person, and then tomorrow I'm going to be raining on June.
Send it to me.
June, I will, I will, I will. June and Dennis's parade. Yes, tonight when I go home. So anyway, tomorrow I'm going to be looking at it with, with several people and going over the formulas and going through the sheets and hunting out ferrets and rats and mice and making sure it's accurate. But I cannot swear that that's going to end up clean. We may need to come back again. I hope not.
June, you're willing and comfortable with proofreading? Oh, no. I've, I've worked with the spreadsheet before, so if I can just see it, I can change it, because I usually do every year when you guys send it to me, and I...
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, as soon as you give it to me, I'll take a look.
I will share it with you, I will share it with you tonight, so you can look at it, and then I'll come by tomorrow and we can, you know, I was trying to take up too much of your time, because I know, but...
Well, this is important.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Anyway. So that does not mean we should not make a vote on this tonight, right? My level of comfort is such that I think we're fine to do that, and we should, whatever we think is appropriate. But I do want to at least make you aware that's out there, and I will advise you. Hopefully, it'll come back and say, oh, it's okay. But I can't give that answer right now.
Yeah, appreciate the heads up.
Sure.
So the second vote will be to take, lower the funds to stabilization, and it'll reduce the amount going into stabilization.
Well, that is, there are two options. We can, we can pull money from what we're going to put into stabilization. We can also pull more money. There's 25K still available to stay at the level within the, the assessor's overlay that the assessors actually set, as opposed to the additional caution that Molly would have liked.
I would stay with the assessors and instead take money out of stabilization.
Okay.
Already hit them.
Speaking for myself, I'd be comfortable pulling 25K out of there. I mean, Stan is comfortable potentially doing more, but what do the two of you think?
From stabilization?
Well, this would be, we're currently slated about $150,000 into stabilization. The discussion is, we could lower that from 150 to something lower and pull that money through and use it for some temporary, for some budget relief for this year, for this FY20. And I would say, I'm comfortable with 25, speaking for myself. We'd, Stan is saying he'd be comfortable with 50.
Or another option would be is we do the, we do the 25 from both and get the assessors down to the 150 that they initially felt a comfort level with.
We could do that.
And so that frees up 25, and then we submit 25 less to, to stabilization, and we decide where we're, we would apply the 50 to. And then, then it's a matter of picking and choosing what we're, what we are not going to cut.
So if we find the, if we find 50,000, that's roughly two-thirds of what's on Chris's list.
Truth, correct, yes.
Is there a... I have it in my head. How much of this list is, is it about new hire?
Only one is a new hire. The rest is expanding staff hours for different, or expanding staff hours and/or paying existing staff more.
It's the treasurer's new hire.
What's that?
No, no, no.
Treasurer or collector is...
Treasurer's office recommended for new hire, it says.
Well, hold on.
Right, yes, because we will be going out to search for another treasurer collector next year.
Right, yes.
And it was a recommended salary.
That's average salary for a treasurer collector.
Right.
So you're kind of bringing the position up to scale, up to regional norms.
And it's, it's similar to the same situation with the town administrator. You know, we looked at salaries and, you know, the range for salaries, and
Sure.
we wanted to be able to fund the range.
I know, I understand.
And hopefully, it won't be used, but we don't know. It depends on who the candidate is.
I understand. Yeah. So the only one that is for, you know, when you say the treasurer is for new hire, that's, yeah, I mean, if we, we could keep Dennis, we could hire somebody else. But 75 is indeed sort of the middle of the going rate for that job. There's 20, there's 2,200 for expanding the hours of the clerk who works for the ZBA and the building inspector. She's part-time. Yeah, there's a lot, you know. There's a lot more there.
Hard choices.
Yes.
Well, my, my thoughts about new versus existing is that, given where it appears we stand this year on budget, that postpone all the new activity but take care of the existing.
Yes.
That's where I would go with however much money is we can find to allocate. That's what I would do with it.
Sure.
But it's not easy for you to...
I can circle the ones that apply to existing staff if you want, because I can do it off the top of my head. No, no, that's, you know...
I've looked at this paper for the fifth time and maybe I can get it.
Sure, okay.
It's very clear, Chris. I just not...
Money that applies to existing staff that would either expand the hours or, and/or raise the pay of existing staff.
It's probably just the minutes clerk.
Yeah, the minute clerk is really the only new note.
The minute clerk is the only absolutely new one, yeah, but some of them are like, are not, not directly related to
Current staff.
To staff, like the legal, legal expenses and things like that.
I just know that if things go like this year, we will be running short again. Hopefully not.
Running short in what respect?
About legal?
For legal.
Yeah. Just be good, right? Do what Santa Claus says. We'll be fine. Okay. 2,200. Yeah, I circled the ones that... I'm not including the town administrator, like I could. I mean, it does apply to someone we're going to hire. Those are the ones that, that are in the category that I think you were discussing.
So circled is existing?
Yes, correct. Except for the town administrator. That 5K is for someone that we would hire.
They actually already advertised at 150 as the
Goodie!
range. That, I mean, that's been going on. We had to do that.
Oh, I understand. No, 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 that, that's not criticism.
The top range.
It's the top range, though. Certainly, it would be that.
Yep, sure.
That was what the advertiser said, maximum, I think, of 150 or whatever.
Here's the paper I was looking for from Steve about the town administrator, just the...
We're in the, we're in the $50,000 if we...
In the neighborhood of what?
We're in the neighborhood of $50,000 if we...
Right.
And a big chunk of that being legal expenses.
Once again, I just want to make sure you, didn't you have to add the $8,000 for the electric?
Oh, I didn't put that, no, I didn't put that in there. I'm sorry. That's something we have to do.
Yeah, so when that applies with the...
That applies to whatever, whatever we do at the moment. Add 8K to it, because there's 8K that we need to add to the electric budget.
And that was the only one, right?
Yes, it is. I was clever and caught the others.
So I'll carve this up by zero.
Why don't we use a calculator?
Yeah, use a calculator.
Not that I don't know that you can't add, Dave, but I just want to, I just want to be sure. Okay. Matter of fact, I'll even use a spreadsheet. How's that?
No, just read them two.
Okay, go ahead.
10,000?
10,000, yep.
2,200?
2,200, yep.
7695?
Seven, six, nine, five.
11, 11,000, 355.
11,000, 355.
5,000.
5,000.
12,000?
12,000.
5,000.
5,000.
And the electrical?
Okay, that's an additional 8, plus 8,000. Okay, that would come out to 61,250 if we did the ones that are circled there, plus the, what we need to do for the electrical.
Including what we need to do for the electrical.
Correct, including, yes, the circles plus that.
And that, part of that was the legal?
No, that's not including the legal.
So the ones that you have not chosen are the legal and the minutes clerk?
The legal and the minutes clerk, and there's a 500, or if there's a 500 in there that I don't know what it's for, it's in
Building inspector?
It's in between town, oh, yeah, 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 okay, that's the building inspector.
Yeah, sorry, it's pretty much scribbles.
No, that's okay. These were your notes for talking to us, not a report you were giving us. That's fine.
The 2,200 is in there?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
The 2,200 came from the ZBA.
Right. I could see doing, oh, man. This is more than I'm comfortable doing, to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you there, pause.
And actually, Dennis is the, treasurer's the 11, 355. If I were to do my, my personal preferences, and I'll pass this around so people can look at it, I would do town accountant, town treasurer, these, the ZBA clerk. What does that get, what does that, so all of, all of the things circled plus the 8,000 gets us to 61,250.
Yeah.
If we did June plus the 2,200 for the ZBA, plus the 11, 355. That gets us to 23,555. And then if we add
Town administrator.
Well, I'm putting the 8K in because we have to do the 8K.
All right.
Then do we want to?
COA salary?
They asked for the move, to tell you the truth. I mean, I, I think that's, I think that's probably lack of experience on the director's part, if I had to guess. I mean, I think she was asking for what she thought, the director of the council on aging, Holly. You know, I suspect Holly asked for what she considered to be the ideal thing to get, which I totally understand.
I didn't even know. I mean, I was just looking at salaries.
Yeah, 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 I understand. And I'm planning on talking with her and
So if you leave that off, it gets us down to 50.
Leave those two off, you mean?
The, the 12,000.
That's true.
Let's just do that. It's a tough one for her.
Well, is that 12?
12,000.
Okay, hold on one second. Let me look at the council on aging. Council on aging, council on aging, COA.
It's 3625.
Well, that's expenses that they were looking for, and I think we can level fund their expenses if we, if we take the 12K off, then we can fund everything else, which would include
Their, here, their COA expenses would
So you're, you're excluding the COA, the 12,000, the
Just the COA for 12,000.
Just, just the COA, 12,000. If we did that, then we'd get, we'd get, we'd get to 50K, which is a number that I think we can probably live with. What do you think? If we did
Or staff, you're still not doing the legal.
Correct. Yes. I don't, we, I mean, believe me, we, we understand that giving you 60 instead of 80 for legal is not giving you as much as you think you may need. We do, we just
I would, I would prefer to take care of the people
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than the legal.
Yeah.
It's my preference.
And I mean, you know.
But we also might not have a choice. I mean, we're going to have to pay that bill from somewhere.
Well, we can see, but, you know, we can make that a problem.
We can hope.
We can make that a problem for the future where, you know, they once asked a rabbi, why, why he tried to put off beating with the czar who was going to have him killed, and he said, well, a year is a long time. There could be a war. The czar could die. It probably wasn't going to work, but it might.
I think, doesn't that come from Fiddler on the Roof?
It could be, I'm not sure.
If not from there, they also reference that.
Okay. So are we comfortable with doing, if we, if we give relief to everybody except for the council on aging, then the cost comes out to, hold on just a moment. 61,250 minus 12,000 equals 49,250.
There's a number I like.
That's a number you get.
49,250. Can we live with, we can live with, why don't we call it an even, even 50? Throw 750 back at the fire department so they can get at least a little bit of relief from it.
We could give it to, we could give it to COA, we could give it to council on aging.
Give it to council on aging. I want to just cut it and just say, but it's maybe
I'd rather give it to fire and talk to council on aging in the future.
That's right. Might need a lift on that bus, I was just saying.
You know what? There are a lot of places in here where they can maybe come back to bite me besides just that bus. I have neighbors who have cars. I'll take that risk. But good point, fair point. So are we comfortable with that 50?
Yes.
Okay.
Coming from where?
Well, 25 of it would, would be reducing the assessors overlay down to the 150 they asked for as the assessors themselves, and taking 25 out of the increase, the, see, not the increase, taking 25K out of the 150 that we had proposed. Here's, here's what actually happens with that 25. 150 proposed to go into stabilization. 25 of it comes out, gets stuck in, gets substituted in for 25 of the Highland Commons Public Safety money that was going to be used to pump, to, to fund self-contained breathing apparatus. So they still get the same amount of money. The 25 freed up there gets subbed in to the section of the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund that's used to offset the budget, and that frees up the other part of the money that we need. Does that all make sense?
Thank you.
Would you like me to make a complicated motion that accomplishes all of that at the same time?
No, I really wouldn't.
Then I won't, okay. One at a time.
First motion would be to rescind the vote we just took.
No, no, it would not actually.
Should we amend the vote we just took for 4 to 0?
We can just add an additional one. They amount to the same thing.
Reduce the assessors overlay by another 25,000?
Yeah. That's, I mean, speaking as one process queen to another, that's my preference, if it's okay. It accomplishes the same thing in the end, it's just your comfort level with how we do it.
It just, yeah.
It's rubbing you the wrong way. Can you live with it? Is it a very
Does it show that we're indecisive, Dave?
It shows that we just voted to reduce it by 75, and now we're going to reduce it by another 25.
Okay. So it's kind of just a fact, right?
Yes.
It's just a fact.
The facts on the ground don't change, it's just how we account for getting there. It both are truthful. Like I said, it's one process queen looking at it personally.
We're on camera, so I think we might just do what we, just continue to do what we're doing.
But it goes back to Stan's point of if we vote now, what if we need to find it later? So there's your point.
Right. I mean, that's just, this is the nature, this is the evolving nature of the meeting, and this is how we have to
People, hey, you came to us and asked for money, and we're giving you some.
I'll get, pick you up on the bus.
Fair enough. Sold. Okay. So, motion number one is to, if someone cares to make it, to lower the amount in the assessors overlay from 175 to 150,000, or by an additional 25 that also gets you there.
Additional 25.
You got it.
To 150.
Correct.
I second that motion.
So moved. I'll make the motion.
It has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Thank you. The next piece of this, which I'll do in pieces.
Why can't we just take it out of stabilization and lower it? That was my argument.
Take all of it out of stabilization as opposed to?
No, take, instead of, we need another 25,000.
Correct, yes.
I would just prefer to take it out of stabilization rather than do this
The assessors overlay on both?
No, Highland Commons Fund. You had talked about
Well, David, that, what I'm, the Highland Commons Safety Fund is just a conduit to get it into the budget. Right?
You'd just be telling, you'd be freeing up 25,000 of public safety money.
Eventually, eventually it comes out of stabilization.
It, it, it will lower the dollar amount of the warrant article that is putting money into stabilization from 150 to 125.
So that's in free cash. So in order to get it out of free cash and over into the budget, you have to do this gyration?
Correct.
Got it.
So it's going to be two votes?
That's correct. Well, vote number one is this, to take $25,000 out of the 150 that we had proposed to move into stabilization this year, and transfer that into the warrant article to pay for self-contained breathing apparatus. That's the first step. Would anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You can abstain if you wish.
It's going from Highland Commons to
No, 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 25,000 is going from the, it's coming out of the 150 that was going to go into stabilization, which will now become 125. It's sad that I can do this in my head right now.
No, I think you've said it enough times.
Oh, I knew it this morning after breakfast.
You really need to draw a picture.
I could, yes.
And you'd only have to do it once.
Okay. So 25,000 is coming out of the money that was going to go into Highland Commons, no, that was going to go into stabilization. Here, I'll show you. Right now, 150K that's destined for stabilization. 25K is going into SCBA, self-contained breathing apparatus. No, out of, out of the stabilization article, not out of Highland Commons. I'm sorry.
Okay, take 25,000?
Yeah, 25,000, out of the article.
Okay.
Right. Out of the article that's to go into stabilization.
This is Article 32, stabilization.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay.
That, transfer that 25 into the article that's funding self-contained breathing apparatus.
Which is article?
I can find it if you want to pass it to me. I can know roughly where it is. Thank you very much.
I should have written on it because I was tracking votes.
Ah, Article 23. So it's going to Article 23. So that's the first, that's the first thing to do.
Yep.
So let's make that motion. So $25,000 coming out of Article the stabilization article.
Article 23.
I could just, just leave it for stabilization.
That's fine, okay. And going into the self-contained breathing apparatus one. So that's one. Do we make that motion? Is anyone willing to?
I was going to say, I thought we did that already.
I think we already voted.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, we voted. It was 4 to 0. I was just, it was just making sure it was counted for accurately in the minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
So we've done that piece.
Okay.
The second piece, and that's free cash, the second piece is to take 25K in Highland Commons, Highland Commons Public Safety Funds, out of Article 23.
Okay. And?
And to put it into the Highland Commons Public Safety Funds being used to defray the budget.
Public Safety Funds?
Yep, Highland Commons Public Safety line item, you can say if you want.
Okay.
In the FY '20 budget.
Is that the dodgy part?
It's not on that page. It's on, it's in the dodgy part, yes, which I promised to show you soon. Yeah, and that, that gets us the other, the other half of the 50K. So would anyone care to make a motion to then, having now transferred $25,000 of free cash from the amount that was going to go into stabilization into the article that's funding self-contained breathing apparatus, we would then take $25,000 of Highland Commons Public Safety money out of the self-contained breathing apparatus article and move it into the line item in the budget that provides budgetary relief? Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, what do we call that? Highland Commons Public Line Item?
Highland, Highland Commons Public Safety Line Item in the FY '20 budget. Does that make any sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, ready for vote.
Would anyone, would anyone like to make that?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
We're just waiting.
Okay. Then we're done with that. So that, what that will do is restore 10K to the town accountant, restore 2,200 to the ZBA clerk expense, restore 7695 to the administrative secretary, restore 11, 355 to the treasurer, restore 5K to the town administrator budget, and provide $750 to the fire department so they can Well, no, badges were last on their list. Believe me, they have other things they need more. I've been down there looking. So that's what it would do.
Thank you.
It doesn't include the minutes clerk, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate everything you guys do.
Sure.
Thanks so much.
It was some hard choices, and I'm just thrilled. I know you're volunteers, I know you're trying, you're down to, but to put people first
Yeah.
is very important. We appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Well, it's not hard.
We're trying.
So it makes you all look good.
I mean
Really, for every bad day that we have, you guys, you guys do it 10 times, so thanks.
Thank you. So, you know, just because I won them too, and people are looking on camera, if they're watching a video this long, don't you have something better to do? Jeez Louise, anyway.
They're waiting, bud. They're waiting for you.
Be aware that we are, in the next couple of days, several of us are going to be getting together to make sure that the, the elderly spreadsheet, like the town of Berlin, it is venerable, that accounts for our budgetary process, given the major changes that are happening this year with monies going into the new combined school district, et cetera, just to make sure that everything is on the up and up and functioning correctly. And I do not consider it likely, but there is a possibility that we may go in and make sure all the formulas are right, whatever, and it may still come back to us and say, your life still sucks, you just don't know it yet. I hope not, all right? I've done my level best.
We're counting on you, June.
I've done my level best to try to make sure that doesn't happen, but it's such a
I actually have quite a bit of faith in what you've done.
Yeah, thank you.
Based on what I saw.
Yeah, I mean, I've really, you know, but spreadsheets and I have been close to one another for an awfully long time, so I'm experienced at this. I just can tell you based on the little experience that I, not having put all the formulas in and not being in Excel, I know where to click to have the formulas all tell me where they connect with different colored lines, and I know what the colors mean. In this version of a spreadsheet, it doesn't do that so easily. And so we're going to, but it should be fine, but if it's not, we'll let you know. But if it's not, we'll let you know.
Save, save often?
Oh, it auto-saves. Believe me, I have it set to auto-save. And I archive. But yes, good advice. Actually, I'll keep this.
Minutes from last time?
Yes. Oh, and by the way, we have some minutes from last meeting. We should deal with those.
Did you get a coffee stand?
No. There you go. Thank you.
That's my fault.
Okay.
He's not.
It was all this file we were...
He's staying here.
I thought that was your file.
That's my file. No, I'm sorry.
But that's okay. No, that's fine. This is a nice level for me to run.
Okay.
I have reviewed the minutes, and they are consistent with all my notes.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
So I can...
I still want to take a look. I haven't reviewed the town council comments on Article 42, so I still have to do that?
That's just a task assigned to you in the minutes.
It doesn't say when I will do it, but I wanted to do it.
We assume that you will do it, we assume you will do it before town. Tomorrow would be good, because that's the... It's 5 o'clock tomorrow.
So just a vote on the minutes.
Okay. Well, given that they, they look okay to me, would anyone care to make a motion about the minutes?
I think Mary had a strong statement to say about them. I think she should make the motion.
I was about to move that we accept the minutes as written.
Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are approved. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Take care.
So we restored?
Yes. I will put these in the spreadsheet to reflect the changes that we made. We restored town accountant, ZBA clerk, administrative secretary expansion, treasurer, town administrator. Those are the ones that we restored. And then we also put an additional 8K into the electrical budget for town buildings based on the expected additional expenses for that next year, according to June. All right.
Okay. The only one I have is a motion to adjourn.
Nope.
No, we have one more?
Reserve fund transfer.
We have a reserve fund transfer, and we have some articles that we have to act on.
Okay.
All right, so... Okay, I will tell you the articles that we're supposed to act on, and if someone wants to make an omnibus motion to approve them all, I would entertain that. If you're not comfortable with that, we can do it differently. Here are the articles that we have to act on. These are based on the numbers in the revised warrant that Mary sent out on Tuesday of this week. Mary Arada, that's to say. Article 1, which is to deal with the snow and salt deficit in the current fiscal year. And we have $20,000 in free cash set aside for dealing with that. And if it snows between now and then, we shall cry a little bit and add more. But we hope not. It's supposed to be rain and snow, but, you know, we'll see. I know. I saw the weather report and went eh.
I said it's going to go around us.
That would be nice. Well, I mean, Dave has to take it, you know. Anyway, so there's Article 1. We don't know what the... Currently, the amount that we are in deficit is 19,000 and change. We have 20K set aside to pay for that. So we need to vote to approve that. These would all be coming out of free cash, by the way. Article 22, and I know we've already said yes on two of these bills. No, one of them I left out. We've already said yes on one of the ones in this list, and I haven't bothered to look up which one it was. If we approve it again, life will go on. Article 22 is a bill from the fire department, all these bills from the fire department came in late, for $485.41. Article 23 is a bill for $1,193.53. Article 24, 23 is 1,193.
Okay.
No, 1,193.
1,193.
Yeah, so you can get rid of the two zeros. 1,193. .53. Article 24 is 3,045.48.
Yeah.
And Article 25 is 2,15, $215. These are all bills that came in after the end of the fiscal year. We have to see if we can do something about this. This didn't used to happen for reasons mysterious to me.
Once in a blue moon.
Yeah, it's been happening a lot in the past couple of years, and it's getting on my nerves, but there we are. We already approved one that was for $99 and change. That's in our minutes from a prior gathering. The last one that we, so those, those four.
Okay.
Then the additional one that we would need to have an opinion about is the school system wants to set up
Special fund?
A special fund to defray future unexpected special education expenses, which would become a savings account that we would put money into.
And at this point, we're just establishing?
It's just to establishment. It's not putting money in it. So those are the things that we're asked to have opinions about, and we don't actually have to set amounts for them tonight, other than to account for the amounts of the bills that I just went through. It looks like that's going to cut about 3, 4... 3,000, 4,000. About 5,000 additional dollars out of free cash, but that's within the, within limits that Dennis said you could tolerate. So do we want to do an omnibus motion to have it done, or would we rather do them one at a time?
An ombudsman's?
No, an omnibus motion.
Those are the kind of clouds that make the, which ones are they? Are they the ones, the puffy ones?
That's when Congress does it, when they do an omnibus budget bill, where they take all the budget proposals and go smack them all together and vote on them at once.
All right. I want to be like Congress. Let's do it.
This hour?
Just teasing. Yeah, so it's way too late to change.
Understood.
So there's six...
1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Yes, there are six articles.
Articles as noted in the minutes.
As noted in the minutes.
I make a motion to approve these six articles. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Nobody abstaining. Okay. And if you would note that all that, all the funds in these...
Would be...
They're all free cash.
Okay.
And this is also going to be free cash, the one up here, Article 1.
Free cash.
Yep. Okay.
Did somebody make a grand total of what all those were, or those...
The amount.
Because we don't have... The special fund actually has no money in it.
Ah, right, right.
Yeah, that one's just establishing it.
Okay.
The total for 22, 23, 24, and 25 is just shy of $5,000.
Okay. I did hear that. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. All right. The last thing we have to do, I believe, unless there are people hiding in the hallway, and you better stay out there if you are, is... There is a reserve fund transfer request for electrical expenses. The amount requested is 14,550, correct you? Okay, $14,550.
What was our rationale for leaving that at 60? When we knew the new building was coming on, we thought that it would be...
Because it was supposed to have solar panels.
And we thought, at that time, we thought it was going to.
Yes, and what happened?
I know, yeah.
The grant, the grant that would have funded that portion didn't come in, and the department had shrunk the size of the building in order to fit within the budget that he had, but that didn't allow the solar panels. So now the energy committee is actually working with Highway to see what they can do to...
Right. Maybe make an array of...
Yeah, to fix that. But for the time being...
That was why we kept it at 60.
You're correct.
The architect also estimated it's going to be between $1,200 and $1,500 a month, not $5,000.
You know, why don't you and I have a talk about that architect later on?
Not $5,000 total? No?
$5,000 a month.
Per month.
When the, when it's cold.
It's not every month, but we did have a couple.
Winter months. Yep. Okay. So, June, do you have the... Do you recall the balance? Oh, yeah, 60.
We had 60 in there. Spent X amount. Left us with like a $4,000 in there.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm thinking about the reserve fund itself.
The 14?
How much does that leave us in there?
Yeah, I believe the reserve, I believe the reserve fund...
You had 70 last time you were here.
Right.
Did you do a transfer for fire? Asked for a transfer of...
We did.
We did.
We were on fire. We did the same right in a moment.
I can't remember if it was 3,000. Was it 3,000 dollars? I don't remember what it was.
It was in the 3 to 5 range.
So we're at 6 to 5, worst case.
I can give it to, put it in there if you want.
So we're probably down around 50.
So if it was 5, then you're at 65-ish.
This will bring us down to 60.
All right, well, let's say...
I'll go find it.
Yeah, if you would do that, that would be lovely. Thank you. Date of the meeting is 4/3/2019. Number present in voting, that would be 4.
Or Michael in this town.
Does this request? Yes, it does. Approved transfer amount, well, first of all, I assume we're probably going to say yes.
Yeah, we don't have a whole lot of choice.
Preliminary poll, yeah.
Okay. I've never done that before, but okay, there you go. Straw poll says yes. All right.
Why didn't I think of it? It was so clever, Dave.
Moderator. Former moderator. It's in your brain.
Okay.
You can take the moderator out of the town meeting, but you can't take the...
The town meeting out of the moderator.
Okay. So we do have the money in the fund to do that. June and I are going to put the precise amount on with the subtraction afterwards. But all those in favor of $14,550 being transferred from the reserve fund to the town building electricity fund, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Actually, we're supposed to make a motion.
Yeah.
Motion.
We did.
Second. Good. Excellent. Stan remembers it. It must have happened.
It must have happened. I don't remember things that...
Don't ask us. Okay. That being the case, 4 to 0 approved. We all have to sign it.
What do we think we're going to have to still take out of here? Do we have any clue?
What do we think? What, what, what?
We'll still have to take out of here. Any clue?
Oh, last year, we spent the full 90 because things showed up in June.
Yeah.
So...
We'll get there when we get there, right?
We will. And when, and when we're done, well, the nice thing is that in the last two months of the fiscal year, it is permissible by, with consulting the accountant, to move money between light items within the same department to cover deficits. And that will cover most things. But, you know, the people who really bought a lot of lollipops are still going to be coming to us to say, "You've got to give us some help." And we'll be like, huh.
67.
Thank you. Okay, so we were at 67,000. Before that, and 67,000 minus 14,550 remaining in the reserve fund after that transfer is $52,450. And yeah, if you could get that in the minutes, that would be lovely. Thank you very much. And gee, we can give this straight to June.
How about that?
Talk about super service.
Just come to everyone at our meeting.
Yeah. Lynn, you really wanted to stay and see how this movie ends, didn't you?
I am having a great time.
As are we.
This explains why you deal with the ZBA all the time. Now I have some insight.
Worth the price of admission.
Okay. All right. That is everything that I had on my agenda, unless anybody else has anything, but I think we're done. Would anyone care to make a motion to get out of here?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor of getting out of here?
Aye.
Aye.
All aye. That's unanimous. It's 9:59 PM.